Troy zoning board of appeals to order. And before we go into the agenda, a few introductory remarks and introduction of the members and staff. The Board of Zoning Appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors or peers appointed by city council to pass judgment on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty running with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. The Board will hear the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. Then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the Board to explain the justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the Board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the request should raise their hand and when recognized by the chairman, come up to the podium and sign in on the sheet provided. The speaker should identify themselves with their name, address, indicate their relationship to the property in question, for example, a next door neighbor or live behind the property, and state whether they are in favor of or against a variance request, and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairman. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertain to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the chairman to speak at any one time. At the conclusion of public comments, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the Board. The Board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or table the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes for approval are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the Board's decision to the Oakland County Circuit Court. And now introduce the members of the Board and also our staff who are here tonight. On my far left, your right is Glenn Clark. Next to him is Michael Bartnik. Then Thomas Strat, who is sitting right next to me, who is not only on this Board, but he's also our liaison to the Planning Commission. Myself, Chair Dave Lambert. Next to me is our Vice Chairman Alan Neal. Next to Alan is Bill Fisher. And last, but certainly not least, Ken Courtney. From city staff, we have Paul Evans, who's a zoning and compliance specialist, and Assistant City Attorney Alan Motzni. And I will also introduce, even though they probably won't be shown on screen right away, but we have our two brand new zoning board of appeals alternate members, Bruce Bloomingdale and Aristus Keltounis. They're out in the crowd, and I'm sure we'll have a chance to have them introduce themselves later on in the meeting. With that, we are ready to launch into the agenda with the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bartnik.
Present.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Courtney.
Here.
Mr. Fisher.
Here.
Mr. Neal.
Here.
Mr. Lambert.
Here.
Mr. Strat.
Here.
Thank you. All present. Next is the approval of the minutes from the January 17th meeting. Is there a motion to approve or any questions or corrections to the minutes?
Chairman.
Mr. Clark.
I'd like to move approval of the minutes as presented.
And before I accept Mr. Courtney's second, since I saw his hand raised, one minor correction or actually a question from Mr. Evans. On the motion to approve the variance last month, I requested as part of the motion that we, that the petitioner make sure that the green areas that were lost in their changes would not be lost, that they would compensate for it. I noticed on the map that you provided for us that it shows the areas that are going to be paved and the areas that are going to be green space. In your opinion, does that achieve the goal of my suggested language on that?
You know, what I can do is, there is some green space off of this, and I can expand that, the diagram, in the minutes, so that can be done to accurately reflect that.
Okay. All right. If it's no objection from the mover and the seconder, the minutes will be voted on by the Board with that minor correction. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Seeing none, we're ready for the roll call. Mr. Evans.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Strat.
Yes.
The motion passes.
And that was seconded by Mr. Courtney?
No, yes.
Thank you.
Next is approval of the agenda. Any changes to tonight's agenda anyone would like to make? Seeing none, we will go ahead with the agenda as presented. The first hearing we have for tonight, and our only hearing, is a variance request from St. Nicholas Greek Orthodox Church for the OPA Fest at 760 West Waddles. Mr. Evans, could you present the case to us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property is located on the north side of Waddles between Crooks Road and I-75. In the overhead on display, it is encompassed in the red border. The zoning of this property is community facilities, and to the north and west is a single-family residential zoning. The zoning to the east is conditional zoning, single-family residential, but the conditional zoning with the apartments there. And zoning to the south is either multiple family or single-family zoning. And that's a close-up of the property. The subject matter involves the request by the applicant to hold an outdoor special event in the rear of their property, commonly known as OPA Fest. This diagram here shows the building and the portion of the outside part of the property where they want to hold the festival. They did apply for a outdoor special event permit, and the city was unable to approve it due to the duration of the event combined with the duration of the setup and takedown. The event is scheduled to go for four days, but the setup and takedown is going to last for three days. That's a total of seven days. The zoning ordinance restricts the amount of, the duration of the event rather, to four days. That includes setup and takedown. It should be noted that the requirement, bringing it from seven days to four days, is part of our new zoning ordinance that was passed last year. Previous special event permits have been issued for the seven-day period under the old zoning ordinance, which did allow a seven-day period. And they are also requesting the variance to allow a seven-day period for multiple years.
Any questions for Mr. Evans? Yes, Mr. Bartnik.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How many years would we be able to grant a variance prospective?
I can see in the ordinance, there's no limit.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Mr. Strat.
There's two issues here. One is, I wanted to make sure that everyone is aware of the fact that I do know the applicants, and I am familiar with the church and have had some affiliation with them. However, I don't belong to it. I don't think there's a conflict of interest in any way, but if the Board feels I should excuse myself, I should wish to do so. So it's up to the Board, but I just wanted to expose that.
Thank you, Mr. Strat. Anyone on the Board have a concern about Mr. Strat's participation? I should also say that I know the applicants. I don't go to church there either, so, but I think probably everyone in town, or most everyone in town, knows them anyway, so if anyone has a concern about my voting, or Mr. Strat, or anybody else has a potential conflict of interest, seeing no one.
I have another.
Yes, Mr. Strat.
Point I'd like to point out then, I think that there may be another variance. I don't know the timeline, but I know that in accordance with our newest ordinance, it was nine o'clock was the deadline for the time. Are they going to exceed that? Are they going to be later than nine? Do you know?
Yes, and that's a good question. The nine o'clock time on certain days applies to residential districts. This is in the community facilities district. It's not one of our residential districts, so they're not bound by that particular extension or time stoppage.
Right. Good. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could just inquire of the city attorney, as to the potential benefit or lack thereof of granting a multiple-year variance to the, to these applicants. And having said that, you know, it just seems to me that they're, clearly they're very good, you know, community neighbors here to, to the entire community. But beyond that, you know, this is a change, and I don't live in that neighborhood, but I would be, I'd have an open, willing ear to listen to residents since, after this particular year, if it were approved, to, you know, if there were complaints regarding noise or disruption to their, the flow of traffic in that area, having the potential for the police department to report back. All those things, it just seems to me that this would be a big ramp up because of the new ordinance, but in light of the fact that these folks have had a larger variance in the past. So I don't know if I'm making myself clear. That's a lot of information, but do you, maybe you understand where I'm going with that question? That line of questioning?
Your question, if I may, Mr. Chairman, your question started out asking about the multi-year variance. As Mr. Evans indicated, there's nothing in our ordinance that precludes this Board from granting a multi-year variance. But there are other limitations. For instance, this Board has to grant the minimum variance necessary. And so that's something you have to consider, whether they could get by with a one-year variance, or whether there's some reason they should be granted a multi-year variance. You have to take in consideration the nature of the request. If you think this is a request for a special event permit, special events normally imply something that happens maybe once a year, normally. And so without telling you what to do, you have to consider whether granting a multi-year variance for something that's designated as a special event under the ordinance meets the character of the ordinance. I don't know if that helps you, but it's your call on that.
Thank you. And if I could just continue, Mr. Chairman. For Mr. Evans, I wanted to ask you before the meeting began, but I simply forgot, you know, normally when we have variance requests, it goes to the community, and, you know, people get a chance to, you know, in written form, communicate with the Board. But regarding the, the time window for the applicants to have their festival, I think potentially, since there's, there is entertainment, I understand, at the festival, have you had any interface with the police department regarding sound, noise complaints?
No, I've issued, I believe, permits every year since 2007 or 2008, and we've not had any complaints or indications from the police department that there were any, any problems.
Thank you.
Mr. Neal, then, Mr. Strat.
I just have one question for staff. To apply for this variance, the administration fees are, what, $150 for the application?
Right.
If we were to grant it over a few years, they would be essentially, let's say, just hypothetically, we did it for three years, they would not be assessed the additional fees for years two and three, right?
That is correct.
And then I don't, you might have to research this, and if you can't answer it off the top of your head, I don't think it's worth the research, but in similar circumstances and based on your experience being here with the city, where we have done multiple year for special use permits, where it's like an annual event, has there been any pattern that you've seen as we've been doing two or three years? I'm just trying to be consistent, and that's the nature of my question. Again, this would be kind of just your recollection, but if you can speak to that, I'd appreciate.
Yeah, I don't recall, except for one case before this Board with Troy Days, of us granting a multi-year variance for.
Okay.
Special events.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Strat, and then Mr. Courtney.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that the, really, the major people that are directly adjacent to the property is really to the north, which is White Chapel Cemetery, but we haven't had any complaints from the residents of the White Chapel, by the way. I'm being smart.
No need to answer that. Mr. Courtney.
Have we done multi-year permits on any? I thought this was, other than Troy Days, I thought this was the first one that we were doing.
They, they come in every year, and they get a special event.
No, no, to us, though, they don't. Up until now.
No, and I'm not aware of a reason. The, I'm guessing the main reason why is because their events are seven days long, and the ordinance changed from seven to four.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm referring to.
Yes.
This Board has only seen this.
Right.
And Troy Days, has there been, I can't recall any others that we've had.
I don't think we've had any others.
That's what I, okay, this has been going on for 17, 18 years. I've never heard a complaint when I was here. I haven't heard a complaint since I've left here either, and I'm just wondering if they always followed basically the same hours and days.
Perhaps they could better answer that than staff.
Okay.
Wait, one second, Cassidy.
Okay. What I was, what I was going to say is, if it's basically been going on at the same time, the same dates, can we put a time qualification in that is just, just as they have now, and then approve it for umpteen years, or five years, or three, or whatever? And as long as they follow the time limits that are in here, if they want to deviate, then they would have to come back.
I'd say if that was a condition, if the Board were inclined to grant the variance, that was a reasonable condition that would tie into the grant. You do have the ability to impose whatever conditions you want, and if it was a multi-year variance with those conditions, the same conditions would apply every year that variance was effective.
And then they'd only have to come back at the end of whatever time we had, or if they wanted to change it.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions for staff? I have two quick questions, Mr. Evans. Number one, and this probably is similar to Mr. Courtney's question, if we were to do a multi-year variance, would it be specific just to the OPA Fest? Or, for example, if we said you can do an event for three or four years, it would not be able to be used for other events that the church might want to sponsor along that line?
That's correct. The, the event would have to be very similar in nature to exactly what was proposed to the Board tonight, and what they considered when they made their decision.
And the other question, and this is probably to kind of head off Mr. Strat when he may ask his question eventually, but is the applicant required to show us some particular hardship in order for the Board to approve the variance?
Yes, the variance review standards for, this type of request are the same for other dimensional and non-use variances.
Okay. Any more questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll invite Mrs. Keltounis, the petitioner, up to speak, and Mr. Courtney had a question, I think, a little bit, and he might want to restate it to you, and then when you're doing your presentation to us, you kind of cite maybe some particular hardships as to why we should grant the variance.
My name's Cassidy Keltounis. I live at 6798 Jasmine Drive in Troy. I am this year's chair of the festival, and actually, I've been the chair over a few years in the past. One of the things I can assure you is we will never go past the eleven o'clock time, mostly because we're too exhausted at the end of that day to do it. It is a three-day festival, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. The reason that we're asking for an extension of the timeframe is we have fairly large tents that have to be set up, so they come in on a Tuesday and set those tents up, and it's all in the back lot. Many people don't even know that we're there until we start having all the cars in the parking lot. So they need, we have CNN, and we've had them over the last five, six years. They set up the large tents, and then Wednesday they come and do the smaller tents and some of the other equipment. So it is, it's very labor-intensive. It's not something that you can set up overnight and be ready for a three-day festival. And everything's torn down on Monday because we have a cranky caterer, and he wants everything out of the way so that he can resume his business.
And be sure that you sign in on the signing sheet there, and while you're doing that, Mr. Courtney has a question for you.
Yeah, this is basically the same schedule and timetables that you've had over the last.
We increased the hours, maybe five years ago, by one hour. Instead of 10, we went to 11, and that was approximately 11 years ago. Police gave us approval then, because we had not had any complaints in the past. We're very careful with the decimal reader. We do have that. We do have, the police are invited to come and have lunch or dinner with us, as well as all of you, if you would like to come. And they make sure that we, if we're having trouble keeping the sound down, they remind the band that they need to lower it. So we're, we're very aware of our neighbors, especially ones to the north. We don't want to bother them too much.
Mr. Strat.
Then my understanding is, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, is that if you are not granted this variance, you would not be able to put this on.
It would be very.
Is that correct? So your variance is based on the fact that you would not be able to actually accomplish this without the variance? That's your hardship?
Yes. It would be very, very extremely difficult.
So I wanted to know what your hardship was.
Yes.
More questions for the petitioner? Seeing none, you can have a seat, and we'll.
Thank you. Can I just add?
Sure.
That the whole experience this year with the planning department and Mr. Evans has been very, very positive. They've been very helpful to us, leading us, getting the paperwork and things done. So I want to give them kudos, and especially Mr. Evans. Thank you.
Actually, I do have.
Yes, Mr. Bartnik, go ahead.
Just to get, if you could just give us an idea of how the change in this ordinance has affected your preparation for the permit? What did you have to do extra this year?
Well, we had to pay $150, and for a church, that's difficult to come up with the funds, number one, plus a lot of paperwork that we hadn't had to do in the past. And I understand the city has to make sure that all of their residents are taken care of and, and are protected, so it's just one of those hoops that we, we have to jump through, I guess. But it made it a little more difficult. We had maybe three, four phone calls and, and a couple of visits to the office just to make sure that we got, because in the past, we didn't have to do that. We always had to apply for special use, and we had to make sure everything went to the police and, and answer some of those questions. But, I mean, it's one of those things that you have to do when you do business, I guess.
All right. Now that you've done it one time.
It's going to be a little easier, because I cut and paste a lot.
All right.
And hopefully, I won't be the chair next year, and we'll pass it on to someone else. Thank you.
You've got the institutional memory set up, though, so that information can be passed along with the rest of the package.
Right, right, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing, and does anyone here wish to address the Board on this particular variance request? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Board for further questions or possibly a motion. Mr. Neal.
I was going to ask, make a comment, but instead, I'd like to propose a motion to approve the variance. I'd like, my variance, my motion for approval is based on the idea that the use proposed is not harmful, and it won't alter the essential character of the property, nor will it impact surrounding properties in which the property is located. I would propose that the variance be approved for the OPA Fest event, and in accordance with their January 13, 2012 application. I would also propose that the, the variance be allowed for a period of three years.
Mr. Strat. Seconds of the motion for approving the variance for a three-year period. Any discussion? Mr. Bartnik.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I am going to support the motion. My concern, though, is the length of the renewal. On the one hand, on the one hand, I think that we have in front of us an organization that has a long history, 19 years, of having the festivals without any problems. On the other hand, we have, so that would kind of go in favor of a multi-year approval. On the other hand, we have an ordinance that has been amended last year, and one of the purposes is apparently the city council has determined that it would be necessary to have this review for festivals or events that are longer than four days. So I think, in the testimony of the organization, is that it is a minor, it is an inconvenience, but relatively a minor inconvenience to have to comply with the new ordinance. So I, I would propose an amendment that we remove the multi-year approval and just go on a one-year approval, with the idea that we would not want to be establishing any precedence for other organizations that may not have had such a good history of presenting festivals. So that's by way of discussion, but also by way of amendment. I don't know if there's a second for it, but I would withdraw the multi-year part of the request, is my amendment.
So Mr. Bartnik has moved to amend it to go to a one-year variance? Mr. Neal?
Yeah, my only comment, and I agree, Mr. Bartnik, with what you're saying, and that, before I made the motion, that's, what I was going to speak to is I'm concerned about making a precedent. And I could have went two years as well as one. The only comment that I have is, and it does fall in the case of a, of a party or a citizen group in, in the city of Troy, such as this one, where I'm reluctant to have to have them come back and pay the nominal fee and go through the bureaucracy. However, your point that you make is a very good one, so I am, I'm appreciative of that, and I think that that's, that is important, and I would be happy to amend my motion so that it is on an annual basis.
Well, let's, we'll assume your seconding is motion, so, yes.
Robert's rule's most clear, when there's a motion to amend, which Mr. Bartnik has offered, that becomes the main motion, and the next course of action would be opening up for a second. If there is no second, then there's, that amendment fails. But if there is a second, the proper course of action, then therefore is discussion. And I'm not denying the gentleman's comments are appropriate. I'm just saying that's, I want to make sure Robert's rules is followed.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. I was concerned, too, about the lack of a second, but I assume that his remarks were leading into a second, so I gave him some degree of flexibility. So we have a motion to amend with, did you mean to second his motion?
I would second his.
Okay, all right, to go to just a one-year. Mr. Courtney.
No, I, I don't think we're setting a precedent. I don't think anybody, as we don't with any other thing. If we allow you to build on the lot line, it doesn't mean the guy down the street can build on the lot line. And I do think that this has been around, for the number of years it's been around, and it's been following basically the same timetable from the inception. I think the only, I don't think three years is too long. In fact, I would have even gone further, but three years, I think, is a nice number. It's, there hasn't been complaints that I know of in the past when I was here, and apparently there haven't been complaints since I've been gone. I just don't see any problem with the three-year span. The passing of the ordinance probably has more to do with the council not wanting to hear new ones that come in that are going to be of a longer duration, like the Troy Days one was. And I think they don't want new groups coming in without somebody reviewing them, and especially not them. And that's the only reason, I think, the change in the ordinance. But anyway, that's my feeling on the amendment. I, I think three years is fine. In fact, I think three years is a minimum.
Any further discussion? Mr. Clark. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know I could make this, this question line for the amendment or the main motion, or the next motion, which is, that will become the main motion, perhaps. But really, a question for city staff, you know, I'm reading through this material, and unless I'm missing something, the petitioner is saying that they have filed all proper paperwork with the state of Michigan, and, you know, once again, being a layperson, I'm not sure what proper paperwork that a church would have to file with the state of Michigan, except for the Liquor Control Commission. And I think therein it lies my question line, because they are therefore requesting to be conducting their festival until 11 o'clock at night. If there is a liquor, temporary liquor permit that's been issued, then I would assume that alcohol sales would be through the end of their festival, which, of course, is before the 2:00 cutoff under state law. So are we aware that there is, I guess we could ask petitioner, but Mr. Evans, are you aware that there is a liquor permit? And the reason I'm asking is because of the change in the ordinance, and then perhaps the Bartnik amendment, you know, bringing it back to one year, which I think perhaps would be a good idea, especially if there is a liquor license involved for this permit related to other side issues.
I didn't research the liquor license portion of it. It was not part of the zoning ordinance and the standards that we administer, so perhaps the applicant could better address your question, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, sir.
Actually, we have to apply for two state licenses. One is for raffle, because we do have a raffle every year. The other one is a liquor license. It does go through the state of Michigan, but it has to be signed off by the police department in Troy. And we can serve the liquor up until 11 o'clock, and then as soon as we close, it closes. And we usually stop serving probably a little few minutes before the 11 o'clock, because we try to get everybody out and cleaned up.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Clark.
Further comments regarding the answer from the applicant? I would just say that I would be, I'm going to be voting in favor of the Bartnik amendment, simply because I think it's just reasonable for the, for the city to have a one-year window to look at this. And I really do think that regarding the previous comments, you know, if, if the city council did change the ordinance, and even though these are good citizens, I think we have to try to adhere to the city ordinance, which is the law.
Any further discussion on the proposed amendment? All right, seeing none, then a roll call on the amendment to make this just a one-year variance. Mr. Evans?
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
No.
Mr. Stratt?
No.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
No.
I believe the amendment passes on a four to three vote. Don't see too many of those around here. But now on to the main motion, which is to approve the variance for one year. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, Mr. Evans, would you read the roll call for passage of the main motion?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
The motion passes. You have a variance for one year. So look forward to OPA Fest this year, and we'll see you again next year.
Glad to see everybody here this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kelsounis. Okay, that's the last public hearing we have for this evening. Onward on the agenda is communications. The only one I'm aware of is Mr. Evans and his, his office passed on information to us about a training session being put on through Oakland County for members of zoning boards of appeals and planning commissioners. Hopefully, everyone did receive that, and if you're able to go that day to make sure you register for that. Any more communications you want to pass on to us, Mr. Evans?
No additional.
Okay. Anyone else have communications? Seeing none, we'll move on to miscellaneous business. And what I want to do, number one, was give each of our brand-new board members, alternate members, an opportunity to introduce themselves to the board, and then a brief discussion by the board on how we want to go about utilizing our alternate members when there's a possibility someone is either absent or not able to, to vote on an issue. So maybe we'll start with Mr. Bloomingdale first. You introduce yourself to the board.
My name is Bruce Bloomingdale. I've lived in Troy for, since 1971. Love this city. I'm happy to be a part of the alternate for this board. Look forward to meeting and getting to know each of you and working with you as the opportunity presents itself. If it's the board's pleasure that you have me be here for each meeting, I'm more than happy to do that. And again, I thank, I thank the city council for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Kelsounis.
So I want to make one thing clear. You know, I was supposed to leave the room, and I asked Mr. Evans if I can stick around. He said, "Do so, otherwise you can get your feet wet." So, by the way, anyway, my name is Arastha Kelsounis. By profession, I'm a sheriff agent, and I've been living in Troy the last 16 years, and before that, I was in business here almost 30 years. So I know, I was involved with the soccer, and I was with the Troy Soccer League. So I've been part of the Masons here in Troy, and also I'm the Optomist Club. So I'm eat and drink in Troy, I guess, all these years. So I'm very happy to be here with you guys, and if I can help, you know, do the best I can. Thank you very much.
And thank, you can have a seat. And thank the city council for finally putting our two alternates in position. I know some of us were a little concerned for a while there whether we were going to get it done, but time heals all wounds, so they got it done, so. I guess what I also want to do, and I shared this information with some of the board members, that how we want to handle the alternates as far as, well, the first question is, and I got a quick answer from Mr. Evans. I asked about when, or Mr. Stratt, if he's unable to attend a meeting, do one of the alternates fill in for him? Because he has kind of a unique position, and I was assured that they would even fill in in his absence, even though it would be hard to always take his place. But if Mr. Stratt was unable, or whoever the planning commission liaison was unable to be here, one of the alternates would take their place. And then I guess the question, too, is some procedural suggestions from either Mr. Evans or Mr. Motzni, as far as being able to utilize our alternates. They're obviously always welcome to be here, but they only have a vote when there's either an absence or somebody is unable to attend a meeting, or, I'm sorry, unable to vote on an issue because of a potential conflict of interest. If you have some suggestions on how we ought to go about utilizing them so that we can make sure that there's at least one of them here at those meetings. Now, Mr. Courtney, you had a question?
Before we pass Mr. Stratt, doesn't the planning commission also appoint an alternate?
Not anymore.
Not anymore?
Yeah, it's been changed. So, Mr. Evans or Mr. Motzni?
There really is no established procedure. I know other communities, what they will do is if, if they know ahead of time that someone's going to be absent, or if one of the board members knows they have a conflict of interest, they'll let the chair know, and then the chair will just contact one of the alternates by telephone and ask them to be at that meeting. If an alternate sits at a meeting and no decision is made at that particular meeting, then that alternate has to come back for subsequent meetings with regard to those requests that weren't resolved at that first meeting. They have to stay with the same request.
Yes, Mr. Evans?
And what I've found, too, in other communities that works well is to alternate the alternates, to give them sitting experience on the board.
Okay. So I guess unless anyone has any other suggestions, Mr. Neal?
I think Mr. Stratt was beating me to it.
I was just going to comment, and I think maybe it'd be easier to get a hold of Paul, let Paul notify either one of them if we know in advance. But emergencies do happen, though, so I don't know how to handle that without giving proper notice.
Mr. Evans, did you have a comment?
A comment to what Mr. Stratt is saying, yes, it, I have, staff has no problem, and it might even be easier to let staff know that you're going to be gone, and then we can put the call into the alternate. And certainly, if there's any emergency, we can do our best to handle the same thing. Also, quite honestly, we have our roster with contact information. I'm thinking of like a text message or maybe a couple of phone calls just to get someone here. Even if both alternates happen to show and respond to a text message, I think that would be, serve, potentially serve an applicant better to have a full board rather than have no one be here.
Great. Mr. Neal, did you have something?
Yes, the only comment I was going to make, and thinking about this before the meeting, is the following, is that it would seem reasonable, and, and I, I think the standard for this can be set somewhat by the chair, but if I had to make the decision, I would just request first that if you are a sitting board member within, say, one week of a meeting, some form of simple contact with the chair, letting the chair know if you're going to be present or not, first of all, is, is easy enough to do. And as a matter of fact, you see that quite a bit already. Not, maybe everybody responds, but I've seen it in the past through the email chain where parties say, "I will be present," et cetera. I know that that doesn't take care of the last-minute issues, but as Mr. Evans said, it's pretty easy to get a hold of people. I feel reluctant to go down the road of suggesting that the alternates always attend all the meetings. I think that's asking a bit much. But I think most of the time, when there's going to be a conflict, you know well in advance, and a week's notice gives everybody plenty of time to make arrangements. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Courtney?
I was just going to make the same, well, somewhat the same statement, that is, if you know in advance that you're not here, you can notify the staff. But for the person with the emergency, you're, you're left with a vacancy. I was going to suggest that if the alternates were doing nothing, they could spend their time down here doing nothing with us. And at least that way, you know, if one of them were available at a last-minute conflict, you'd finally realize you have a conflict with that. But I don't think it should be, you know, a requirement by any means that they come other than when there's been an advanced notice.
Mr. Stratt?
I would certainly recommend, though, that maybe the alternates be present for at least four sessions or six sessions so that they get acclimated as to what the procedures are, they're prepared, as to why we, why we do what we do, and what are the reasons for it. And I know that there are classes for it as well. But, you know, I, I think it would be to their benefit to understand, you know, that we must have a reason for the variance, why the variances are granted, what are the reasons that are acceptable for a variance, et cetera. And I think, Paul, you've given us, we've had some excellent presentations by both legal counsel as well as you, and I think that we're very, very professional. Based on my experience in dealing with other municipalities, I think this board is really a very high-end, very professional board at this point. A lot of credit has to go to you, Paul, of course. But, you know, I, I think it would be good for them to at least attend a certain number of meetings, or at least watch it on TV. I don't know if it's on TV. Is it on TV? I mean, one or the other, you know? But that's my opinion. I don't know how the applicants feel, or the alternates feel about it, but that, that's my opinion. Because it is a responsible position. I mean, let's face it, we're very, very responsible, in my opinion.
Mr. Bartnik?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think there's, I would lean towards at least to have, having at least one of the alternates present at every meeting, at the beginning of the meeting, and possibly both alternates, but at least one of them to be available at the meeting. And, and the reason for that, there's several reasons for that. One is that most of us do try, we always try to give advance notice when we're going to be absent or when we know there's a conflict of interest. But unfortunately, many times, we don't know until we show up at the meeting that there's been an emergency, or one of us has had an emergency or been called out of town on short notice, or on some other issues that, you know, for whatever reason, we forget that there's a meeting, and we can't show up. I mean, there's other incidents that have happened. But we don't find out until the meeting starts that there's an absence, or sometimes we don't find out until we're looking at the audience and we see that there's a conflict of interest, because you can identify, the issue is here. You look at it and say, "There's no conflict of interest," but then you show up, and you see that there's somebody in the audience that's going to be speaking on it, and you realize that there is a conflict of interest. Well, the purpose of the alternate process was to prevent having these matters be put over because of either somebody was absent or because somebody had a conflict of interest. So I think having them on call doesn't really address that aspect of the, of the need for the alternate. And certainly, I think both, both of them are going to, should be on the mailing list. They should get the agenda items ahead of time so that they can do what all of us do, and that is we all go out to the property, we take a look at it, because we know we may have to make a decision on it. So those, it's, I don't know if there's an extra cost that has to go to the alternate. I don't know if they get a check only if they show up and have to vote. I don't know how that works. But the whole purpose of the alternate was to, as I see it, was to be able to have the meeting go forward so there's minimal inconvenience to the members of the public. And then the other element, I would say that they should probably even sit up here at one of the, one of the bench tables so that they are physically removed, to some extent, from the audience. So those, those are my proposals, or my suggestions. There's two types of substitutes in this world. One is, you know, your bowling team, your bridge club, or your card club, or even your Toastmasters club where you have to give speeches. You know, you're kind of on standby, and you can be called and kind of show up and just kind of step in. The other one, I think this is more comparable to the, to the jury situation, a jury trial. You know, there's six jurors or 12 jurors, but there's always seven or eight, or 13 or 14 jurors sitting in the jury box during the whole, the whole trial, because they have to pay attention to anything, and they don't know until the last minute whether they're going to be, you know, called upon. So those are the comments that I, that I have.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My comments, I think, are, keep it simple and keep it less costly. I think that since I've been on this board, you know, the city's gone through budgetary changes, not really in the positive, as we all know. Having said that, we used to receive packets delivered by city personnel to our home, which I really liked. I, over the weekend with coffee at my coffee table or my kitchen table, or I'd go to the Starbucks, I would look it over, and it was convenient because it was there. I didn't have to log on and download, and those, those times have changed. And then the whole point was, we were trying to cut costs. What the cost of producing packets for this many people and, and having them delivered, I'm not sure. I know it wasn't a lot of money, but that's the whole purpose of us, getting rid of those packets, cost-saving, making sure that taxpayers are getting essential services and not anything that could be cut out. And, and I understood the city's policy on that, or the management's policy, perspective, and we embrace it. I think that, you know, responsible members, since I've been here, you know, I think what we do is, we certainly, if we know we're going to be out of town for business, I've even been in a situation where, you know, five days out, I knew I'd be there for the meeting, and then two or three days out, I wasn't sure. So I would let Mr. Evans know through email or phone immediately, the one I knew. I think I've never seen a board member, since I've been on this board, and it's been quite a few years, miss because of a last-minute situation. I know that happens, and it certainly happens all the time in other circumstances, even to all of us. But I think the only one time I can ever recall was when Mr. Kovacs, who was our chairman, had a family emergency or a work emergency, and he actually just got to the meeting a few minutes late, before any votes happened. So I don't see that being a problem. As to Mr. Bartnik's comments, I understand what you're saying, I really do. But as far as the conflict of interest, if I glance at the agenda, and even if we don't have time to all pour over it, a week in advance, or, I'm sorry, I don't think we get it that far in advance. I'm not sure how many days, yeah, thereabouts. But I at least glanced through, and, you know, I may not have a chance to read it that day or the very next morning, but the point is, if I see something that jumps out at me where I would think that there's a conflict of interest, like a family member or something, I would let the, the city staff, which acts as our clerk, know immediately. And so having said that, I don't think it's so much of an issue... And so having said that, I don't think it's so much of an issue about a conflict of interest. And, and on that point, just because we know somebody doesn't mean it's a conflict of interest. We have to have a financial conflict as I, I understand it is. I know that smaller communities operate with a board similar to this, and maybe there's, you know, a couple hundred people in that town or that village, what have you, and they still operate because in a smaller community, everyone literally would know each other and you can still conduct the business. I think full disclosure is important. I, I appreciate when members say, "I know that person, I've known people before this board," just, they were simply acquaintances, and I didn't felt, feel like it rose to the level of disclosing because once again, I've lived in this community a long time and many people have lived here many years longer. But having said that, I think the main point is cost-cutting. I think it's important for us not to create a new, essentially a rule or a procedure where you have to say, "I'm coming." It's every board, a board member's responsibility to be here under, I believe, it's state law unless you're out of the county for business. And so we shouldn't have to basically say we're going to opt in, we just have to basically tell people we would opt out based on a conflict and/or an inability to be in the county the day of the business. It is our responsibility, if we are in Oakland County that evening, to be here at the board, from my understanding of the state law. So I would just say, the more notice we give the city staff or the chairman about an inability to be here or a conflict of interest, the better, but I would oppose having to pay alternates to be here every single time because I think it's unnecessary. It's not a lot of money, certainly, over time, but it is, it is unnecessary.
Any more comments or suggestions? Mr. Stratt?
Do the alternates get paid?
I guess they're checking that out.
Are the alternates paid?
We were just asking that.
The alternates normally would not be paid unless they're actually at a meeting serving as a board member, a voting board member. However, if we implemented a rule through the, a bylaw change or whatever that requires them to be here, it would probably, we would probably have to pay, pay them, and just, just to be fair, if they're going to have, be here, I think we'd have to pay them.
Mr. Neal?
Absorbing all these comments, I, in some ways, I wish I could take back some of the comments that I made because they're, some of the comments here that, that were added really caused me to change my opinion. And, and in thinking about my own history with the board here, which is about a year and a half, I cannot recall where we really ever had more than one conflict or one absence at a time. I may be wrong, but I think what Mr. Bartnik says is of a lot of value, is that we have to have somebody here because in the end, more times than not, the issues that come up are last minute. It would seem to make sense to me, therefore, is that we do request that one of the alternates be present. We pay the individual for being here. If they don't have to sit up and watch the meeting, well, they, they get paid for their time. But I agree that I think in order for the alternate system to have meat and merit and actually function for what we hope it to be, that we really need to, first of all, pay an individual if they're here, and second, have someone here at each meeting, and I think we can lessen the burden if we make it so that the alternates essentially alternate every other meeting or whatever the two gentlemen would like to work out. But I think that that would give us the most value, and that would be what I would suggest.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yeah, I would just indicate, just so the members of the public realize it, the amount that we get paid is a reimbursement, I guess they call it a reimbursement, basically it's $25 per meeting. So on an annual basis, it's not like a, it's a heck of a lot of money that's going to break the budget and, and there's obviously different attitudes towards that, but what we're talking about is even if one, one of the members was to show up alternating one month to the next, and if there were 12 meetings, that would be an additional expense, if my math is correct, of $300. I'm sure we've already saved more than that by going from the paper method of distributing the packets to the electronic method. I mean, the electronic method, there, there's no additional cost. The agendas now, I think we've actually got them to the point where they're readily available online and, and the members can download them online at no additional cost. I mean, they've essentially outsourced the cost of those, of looking at those materials to us, the members, because we have to use, we have to, if we want to print a, a paper, we have to, if we want to see the printed version of, of any part of the application, we have to print it on our own printer. But I would say that the cost is really nominal as part of the overall city budget.
Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, I can only express my opinion, but as I expressed before, excuse me, I think this board is very professional and I hate to sacrifice the quality that we have right now. I think that, I think, I agree, I think that we should have at least one alternate here every day, if nothing more, as an educational process as well as, because there is a possibility that you may want to have, and maybe you don't know whether or not you're going to have a conflict of interest until that day, but what happens during that time, they're going to have to be here for that one agenda item, I'm assuming. Is that not correct, Paul? Would they be subbing, subbing for that one agenda item if you have a conflict of interest?
Right, you said for the one where the, the regular member has to step down.
And hopefully, you're not going to have more than one board member have a conflict of interest that one time.
Well, it, anything's possible. I've never seen it, but anything's-
But at any rate, I, I agree with Mr. Bartnik. I think I would at least want one member here on an alternate basis, and it certainly would not break the bank, so to speak, and it certainly would jeopardize the quality of, I think, this board. I think that's the important thing.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Neal?
One question, just to know, is, in my own experience, I finished up an appointment term for another individual. If something like that was to happen in the future, one of us has to step down for whatever reason, would the replacement, the appointee for the replacement, does that automatically come from one of the alternates or is that something the council can do whatever they want?
A new member would have to be appointed.
Okay, so wouldn't it automatically come from the pool of, okay?
The council could appoint one of the alternates as a regular member, but not necessarily.
They don't have to, okay.
Yes, Mr. Fisher?
I just have a quick question. Has the board ever had alternates before?
No.
So this is something completely new then, so there's no, there's no history at all?
Right.
Okay.
Excuse me, but the planning commission had an alternate.
And how did they handle it?
It was appointed by the planning commission, ratified by the council, and then we, we alternated.
You just alternated?
In the first, many, many years ago, when I was on this board, Mr. Schultz and I, I was the main member, Mr. Schultz was the alternate, and we alternated so that both of us had the exposure and experience on it. But I chose to have that done as part of the alternate process. But that was many, many years ago. I don't know who was on the board at that time. You were on the board, I know, at that time, yeah.
Could that be a suggestion that we might try to have the alternates switch?
Exactly. Exactly, to me, I would, I would rather-
That way, it's not, I'm so much time taken out of their busy schedules and we have someone here.
Exactly. Exactly. I'd, I'd like to see them sit up here with us as an alternate and then alternate their times that they're here. Right, that, that would be my opinion. That's, that's what I'd like to see, and they're being really knowledgeable and seeing how the procedure is, is very important at the beginning. Later on, they'll be, you know, salty, so they won't, they don't have to worry.
And then the other question, I've heard of, I have not had to, I've had to cancel once, and I can't remember how I alerted, and I don't know if I let you know or Paul know, I think I let Paul know. Do we have a standard as to how we're going to do this?
No, but I would suggest that Paul would probably be the best person because, you know, he's here probably 60 hours a week, so probably he would be the best person. But, you know, it doesn't hurt, you can copy myself or any of the other board members as well, just so we're all in the know.
I think it'd be a nice standard to make sure that if something happens, we call him.
Yeah, that would probably be the best way to do it.
We have no problem with that, even if I'm not in.
Better to call Paul and then he has to make sure the alternate knows.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Based upon all of your, based upon all of your suggestions and, and questions, what I would suggest on a temporary basis is, number one, we encourage our alternates to attend the first, you know, few months' meetings. In fact, one of you is going to be put to work next month real quick because I will not be here next month, so one of you will be sitting in as an alternate or as a member of the board next month, so you'll go, get to work right away. The second is, and I think it's a good suggestion, I think Mr. Bartnik has suggested it, is that whenever the alternates are here, that they sit up here because it does look kind of crazy for somebody to come out of the audience to come and sit up here. So we would encourage, unless staff has a problem with it, encourage the, the alternates, whether one or both of you are here that evening, to sit up in this spot over here if that's not a problem with, with Paul or city staff.
I don't see why that would be a problem.
The other is that, on a temporary basis, that the two of you would work together either via email or phone call and say, "Hey, I'm not going to be here this month, can you make sure that, you know, you're here just in case?" And then, on a long-term basis, we look at amending the bylaws so that if we feel as a majority that we want to compel or require one of the alternates to always be here at a meeting, that we can have that as part of the bylaws. And if somebody wants to look into writing that up, maybe for the April meeting when most of us should be here at that meeting, we could consider it at that time. And the last but not least, which I think all of us have just discussed, making sure that if you are not going to be here, like I'm not going to be here next month, notify Paul, or if you look at the agenda and you see a potential conflict of interest, that you notify him as soon as possible so that he can get in contact with the, the ZBA alternates. Does that sound like a good way forward for the next few months?
Yep.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Evans?
As you're speaking, I had a thought. And I'm just throwing this out to the board as, just to discussion purposes. Would there be any impression if the alternates were sitting at the DACE that they had some sort of influence on a case even though they weren't voting or deliberating? Is that a possibility?
It's a good question. Anybody have any observations or concerns about that?
Mr. Neal?
To expand upon what your question is, do you mean the alternate may have knowledge of the issue and they might convey knowledge to a board member? Because it strikes me as the whole Opens Meeting Act issue kicks in.
Well-
I mean, I'm not sure how the information would get-
I, I'm just thinking about public perception. And we've got seven people here who are deliberating and voting, and then there's one or two people. And some perceptions, maybe part of that board, especially due to your appearance up here, I'm not sure if the public would consider that as influential one way or another. Contrast that to, I know we had one time when a board member had to recuse himself during the meeting, he explained his conflict of interest, he got up and left the room. Had we had an alternate, that person would have taken that individual's spot. Just a public perception thing, whatever the board thinks, if you think anything about it at all.
Well, I was in, now I'll call Mr. Clark, what I was assuming we would do is whoever's chairing the meeting, when they introduce the board members, they would introduce the alternates and say they will, these two gentlemen will only be participating in the meeting if there's a vacancy on the board or if somebody has to abstain on a vote. That's what my thoughts were. Mr. Clark, did you have a?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just, you know, I'm kind of a strict constructionist at looking at the intent, the original intent of why something is created. And I think the alternate positions were created in case there was a position, what have you. You know, if you're not acting in an official capacity, you're not part of the board, at least for that particular meeting. I was interested, or I found that interesting that, I'm not sure if it was the city attorney or our city liaison mentioned that, that, lost my train of thought, I'll get back to that in a second. But the, the point is, is that the alternate is part, oh, I'm sorry, regarding the, if the alternate does sit for a particular meeting, then therefore in the future, that alternate must be the board member until that piece of business is, is disposed of. I found that very interesting, I had, I had no knowledge of that. Having said that, and I understand the, the line of logic there, but if you're not part of this, this board, I remember when I first came on the board, I did a lot of research, the city staff was very helpful, giving me more volumes of binders that I could go through, you know, over a weekend. Having said that, it is pretty clear this is a quasi-judicial body, at least that's what the assistant city attorney told me at that moment in time, maybe this assistant attorney, city attorney has a different perspective on that. Having said that, that's my concern because our deliberations are public under state law, we have to be very careful, that's why we have a city assistant attorney embedded into, for the meeting here to ensure that everything is proper because if a petitioner's not happy, then the next step is to go to circuit court in Oakland County, and there's no way that even the city council can overturn our decision. That just makes, you know, I find Mr. Stratt's comments interesting about having the alternate kind of, you know, almost sequestered during our meeting, but what if that person had a comment to somebody in the audience? I'm not sure. The fact is, I just think that, you know, I don't think there would be any problem with having a designated area in the audience for them to sit, but if you're at this table, you are, I think in the eyes of the community, and we are televised, you have an active role in the deliberations, or you are support personnel, or you are, you have an office position related to conducting city business. That's my only concern. And of course, that would be related to only this board regarding our, our procedures and so forth. I just think that potentially, there could be legal ramifications. I'm not an attorney, but I think public perception is something that is important to look for here.
They have been, they are officers to some, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Bartnik.
I think they are officers to some extent, I mean, they were nominated by the city council and, and elected to, by the city council to the alternate office position. So I, I think it would be consistent with that, that they be part of the, the table there, and if they're introduced during, by the chair at the beginning, I think that kind of addresses those issues.
Mr. Chairman, if I could discuss-
Mr. Bart?
I think our rules, procedure, the city ordinance, state law is quite clear, there's, there's only two officers of this board, the chairman and the vice chairman, then there's the public members. Anybody else, there's seven members of this board. Alternates are not members of the board unless they sit in the place of a board member. I think that's a gray area that you're, you're going over, and I don't think that that's appropriate. I think it's, it's clear-cut, you know, related to this board, that only the seven members can deliberate. We can ask for assistance, we can ask the opinion of city staff, we can ask opinions of the, the community at large, but that's where I think the, the line needs to be drawn. I'm just, once again, clear concern about possible litigation and so forth because I know different city attorneys that sat with us have had a different perspective on things, but it's all been very good and, and it's been, as Mr. Stratt said, it's been a very professional board and we've had excellent support, but that's just the one area that I'm just a little bit concerned about. If they're not, if they can't participate in the deliberations, why are they at the table?
Yes, Mr. Bartnik?
I just wanted to thank, thank Mr. Clark, yeah, I, I used the word officer incorrectly. They, they were, they have been nominated as members, alternate members, so that, that was the same point, I had used the wrong, wrong word. Thank you.
Mr. Neal?
Yeah, I mean, this is a worthwhile exercise because this is new for the board and to run this through. And I, and I think I, what I want to ask, and I'm glad this kind of come up this way, is that, one, I, I do agree per se that having them maybe sit off to the left is a good idea. It's kind of a separate area. I mean, when I watch a city council meeting, I, I mean, I know that's kind of where the attorneys and the city managers and assistant city managers sit, but it's clearly identified and I think as the chair introduces the board and who we are, that issue can be addressed right there. I, I do think there's some value of them not being in the audience, but more than anything, and I think I want to express this so it's on, on the tape, is there are seven votes, you know, two officers, seven votes, seven, seven members. If you're not seated, even though you might have something to provide, so the two alternates out there are smarter than us and they really see the obvious that they should, if they're not seated, they really can't say anything. I mean, they can't ask a question, they can't add to the debate, that's my understanding. And I may be wrong, but I'm hoping that that differential closes out that issue of that gray area of are they a part of the board or are they not? They only frankly become part of the board if there's an absence or two, a conflict that removes one of us. To me, it seems cut and dry because of that, but if I'm missing it, you know, please explain.
Yeah, Mr. Stratt and then Mr. Clark.
Just wanted to make a comment. For two years, I sat over in the cheap seats over there, you know, because there's nine of us. So, you know, to me, I didn't feel intimidated by being over- So, you know, to me, I didn't feel intimidated by being over there. So we were all a part of the same board, just to let you know.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It related to Mr. Neal's comments. I understand his perspective, but under state law, anyone who attends or who is in this room has a right to public comment. They, both on the, we by our very nature hold a series of public hearings on any agenda item. We have six items, there's six public hearings. Then on top of that, to boot, at the end, is public comment where people can come to the microphone and talk about anything. They could talk about the price of petroleum, they could talk about, you know, the weather, but they could talk about, you know, the concept of what, where this board should go in the future or what it did in the past, right or wrong. But that's my point, is that people, I'm a First Amendment advocate and defender, and I've been pretty outspoken in that area in my, on my own time, in my own, in my own life. And that's why I think people need to have a right to comment, but that's why if you bring people who can't deliberate in the, on board action points but are offering opinion and that cannot be restricted under our constitutional system of government from offering their opinion, that's my exact point. Once again, you're going over the line and there's this wide, I think gaping gray area there. So once, and yes, if the city council took action, which they did do in this situation, alternates are not board members, they're alternates in case a board member isn't here. And so they're not members of the board, they are elevated because of an absence or conflict of interest. And I think that's completely different. I think there needs to be some differentiation, and that's what I'm saying, is that, you know, the board calls them up during an absence or a conflict of interest and it's stated, there's a conflict, this board member steps down, we're going to call up our alternate now. Now it's quite clear, this person is now a public official in the city of Troy conducting official business for the citizens. That's what I'm trying to say.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I'll go to Mr. Courtney, then I'll go to you.
Yes. If they're sitting up at the table, I think when somebody decides they're taking us all to Circuit Court, they would be taken along with the rest of us just as though they were part of the deliberation. I think, well, I thought, originally I thought it was a good idea. I think now that it might be a bad idea because they could be involved in things that they shouldn't be involved in by going to court on things that they had no, had nothing to do with the decision. I think it's better that they be called out of the audience or out of the section of the audience or whatever if they're needed. I agree that putting them up where they look like they're part of the deliberation is not necessarily doing them or the guy that's suing us a favor.
Okay, Mr. Neal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only comment that I would have, and just following up on what Mr. Clark said, is, and I gotta tell you, I can go either way on where somebody sits, but as far as commenting on an item, it would seem to me, and I implied, I thought I implied this, but I may have missed it, is, is if an alternate member would like to speak on an issue or as a citizen about a proposed variance and they're out there, or they would like to speak during public comment, I mean, they of course have the right. Where I would say they have no involvement is when we take the issue back to the table because then it's just the seven members that are sitting here. Now whether they're sitting there or there is immaterial. I don't think they lose the right to comment as a citizen, provided they do it in the venue of the meeting when that is open to them. But when we bring the issue back to the table to discussion, then we really are just the seven of us plus the staff assistants. And they're not in any different situation than, let's say, any other member of the public or an applicant, unless they're actually brought forth to provide information, they don't have the opportunity. So structurally, it seems like it's okay. But I'd be willing to say on record, I wouldn't care where they sit, really. I mean, I can see the logic both ways, but that's just my thoughts.
Any further discussion or comments? I guess maybe one thing we can do here, since we do have some differences of opinion on this, is maybe city attorney's office and the planning department can look into, number one, what may be other communities, how they're handling this. And secondly, you know, maybe Mr. Motzner or the law department can look into any particular legal issues involved with this, as far as whether they're seated up here and the concern about public perception, and also Mr. Courtney's comments also about, you know, if they sat up here, are they going to be necessarily brought into a law case, a lawsuit situation? So maybe that could be something that you folks could look at and give us some comments on for either the next meeting or the meeting after that. Any further discussion on this issue? Seeing none, no more miscellaneous business? I would open up the meeting, oh, Mr. Evans?
Yes, Sue Lancaster, one of our assistant city attorneys, she's going to prepare some material for our next meeting. She's going to talk about the Open Meetings Act. So she's going to provide basically some discussion. We'll have some discussion and training like we've, a little bit like we've had here tonight. So it'll be important if you guys, if the alternates and all the members, if at all possible, can show up for Open Meetings Act training.
The chairman already said he's going to be-
Yeah, I won't be here next month, so but-
Maybe we want to schedule it.
No, I think I've probably had enough exposure to Open Meetings Act in one career or another here that I probably don't need it, but.
You know, and if I could have segwayed into that, since we do now have some alternates that have not had the opportunity for some of the materials and training, if the board or any of the board members believes that we need a refresher on any of the subjects that perhaps we've been trained on before, maybe we just have additional questions about it, feel free to get those comments over to myself and I can share those with the chair and the assistant city attorney and we can proceed at some future meetings to have some initial comments and training, not just for refresher for the board, but also for our alternates here. Oh, in relation, relative to a comment that Mr. Bartnik made, everyone will be receiving the electronic agendas, including the alternates. And since our notices go out, the postcards go out at least 15 days before the day of the public hearing to everyone within 300 feet of subject property, I've made it a priority to get the agendas available in electronic fashion closer to that 15-day deadline. Number one, if someone gets a copy in the notice, now they can go online and look at specifics. Number two, if I'm going to have it ready for the public, probably should have it ready for the board as well. So that's going to be a priority as well. So I just wanted to let everybody know that.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Thank you. Mr. Evans, your voice is not carrying over to this side of the room as well as it was earlier. I don't know, I'm not asking you to fix anything, just if you could speak a little louder. Did you say that you wanted us to provide questions in advance regarding the open meetings training?
Not regarding the open meetings training. I mean, if you have some, that's fine. But perhaps any other subject matter that perhaps we've had training or commentary from the city attorney's office on before, or if there's something else throughout the course of your, oh, we'll say about the last year, at least since we've been under the new zoning ordinance, that perhaps would be beneficial to either yourself or the board as a whole, just kind of idea to focus on perhaps some issues that may be on the forefront.
Thank you. I sit on another public body, and we have a board attorney, and I have now asked her last week to clarify the Open Meetings Act because the way this body operates is slightly different and sometimes largely different. And so I put a series of questions to her, so I'll be very happy to submit the same questions and try and compare apples to apples. I know different attorneys have different interpretations, but I think, I think the issues have lied, really are that the act has been amended and changed over the years and maybe laypeople like myself have not been able to keep up with it. So I look forward to that training.
Very good.
Mr. Stratt, did you have something?
Is this a part of a training or is this a, what is this, what, is this going to be a part of the main agenda item?
No, we can do it under, for example-
It's a study session or?
-miscellaneous business.
Okay.
I mean, it's going to be-
It seems to me that it's really is a study item that you're trying to actually, and the reason why I'm asking that is I think that they should be also present for that. The alternates should be present for that.
Oh, most definitely, please.
Oh, I'm just looking at, it's kind of a study item more than anything else.
Any more miscellaneous business? Open up the meeting to public comment, any public comment? Seeing no public comments, we are adjourned.